Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the May 30th, 2024, meeting of the City of Gloucester Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is a hybrid meeting, would be held here in public. It's also available on Zoom, and the Zoom ID for tonight's meeting is 837-4781-9720. I recognize in attendance myself, Joe Parisi, Peter Canavo, James Gelati, and Ronald Wilson, and also zooming in, Michael Nyman. And I declare we have a quorum of five. The people will be able to participate in the meeting if they're not in the hall by raising their hand on their app, and they'll be recognized during public testimony. Our first order of business tonight will be the approval of the minutes of May 9th, 2024. Are there any corrections or omissions? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the minutes for May 9th.
Second.
Made and seconded, roll call vote.
Mr. Nyman?
I was not present.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes.
Minutes are approved. We have one continued application, and I believe we are in discussions about a continuance, the petitioner SS Sala Estate Investments LLC seeking a variance under 1.7 for change of use and to construct a second principal structure, two-family home on a lot at 1218 Plum Street. Attorney Favazza.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Per the email I sent, we are still working with some of the concerned neighbors to make changes to the plans, and we'd like to request to be continued to the next available spot, which I believe is not your next meeting, but the meeting thereafter.
Right, it'll have to be June 27th. We have a motion to that effect.
Make a motion to continue the State Investment LLC 12-18 Plum Street to continue to June 27th.
Second.
Made and seconded, roll call.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. Okay, we'll continue that one till then. Our first new application of the night is the petitioner Andrew Lee seeking a special permit under 1.10 and 4.1.2 to allow a lesser number of off-street parking spaces at 5 Eastern Avenue. Andrew, here or online?
There's someone raising their hand. They're raising their hand.
Let's see. Yeah, Lee Tree, that would be him. Let me bring that in. Lee?
Hello?
Yes.
Hey, am I there?
We can hear you.
Oh, great. Oh, gosh.
You're gonna need your name and address, and then you're gonna explain to us your project.
Yeah, so my name is Andrew Lee. I live at 5 Eastern Ave, right next to our Lee's diner down here. And what I'm looking to do is become a two-family. I'd like to be able to rent out the downstairs of my house. But I have only one parking spot.
So I understand from reading your application, it has existed with a rental unit for a number of years?
Well, I moved, yeah, it was, it was, I moved in as a tenant in 1996. It's, you know, it's been empty downstairs for some time, but I have had people stay there in the past. But, yeah, so I'm just looking to legitimize the downstairs as a two-family.
Ooh, our five two-family matter are right to some degree. The parking is the only thing before us. Now, you did, when you rented, their main house was occupied, so it was a two-family?
Yes, yeah, that's correct.
Any questions with the board for the applicant?
They're just asking for that relief. They're not changing the building footprint. Everything's staying the same.
Everything's staying the same. Yeah, no construction necessary. It's just that a second parking spot, it would be impossible to add. So it's the relief for the second spot that I'm asking for. That's correct.
No changes to the exterior?
Correct.
And just gonna start using it again, like to start using it again as a two-family?
That's right.
Okay. Any other questions by the board?
No, I'm just interested in hearing it from neighbors, possibly.
Okay, well.
Actually, no, not talking to you, sorry. No, sorry. Yep.
Let me, let's go to public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience that wish to speak in favor of the application? Please come forward, and I remind everyone, we need your name and address for the record. If no one is here and they wish to speak from remotely, you have to hit the raise hand button on your device, or if you're on a phone, you dial *9 for us to recognize you're out there. So we... Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to the application? Again, come forward, or if you're on a device, raise your hand. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none? Discussion by the board? Somebody raising their hand? There's what? What on my app? Yeah, there's nobody. No one in opposition? Okay, we'll close the public testimony. Any discussion by the board?
Seems reasonable. I mean, build a two-family by right, they just need a little relief for the parking and the hardship.
Peter, speaking to your mic, please, just so I can hear.
The hardship there is the size of the lot. So I don't see an issue with it personally. Anybody else?
No issues.
No issue for me.
Not a variance either. I mean, it does have tremendous hardships on shape and all, but basically it's a special permit to allow one space instead of two. With that being said, anyone wish to make a motion on the application?
I make a motion to the petitioner Andrew Lee seeking special permit to allow a lesser number of off-street parking space. I don't believe it's more detrimental to the neighborhood. I think it's a simple adjustment, so I approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Issue a special permit to allow a lesser number of off-street parking spaces. Roll call vote.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Parisi?
Yes. You've heard our decision's favorable. We will draft the decision that will eventually make it to you, and then you'll be able to register it with registry of deeds and go ahead with your project.
Excellent. Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, our second hearing is the petition of Marina.
Yeah.
Okay.
He should hang up his phone there.
1.9 and 2.3.4.3 to alter, expand, a non-conforming residence on a non-conforming lot, a special permit under 3.1.6 to exceed the maximum height of an accessory structure, a shed, and to amend a previously granted variance under 1.7.4 for side and front yard setbacks at 8 St. Louis Avenue. Attorney Favazza.
Thank you very much. For the record, my name is Joel Favazza. I'm an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions, 123 Main Street. I'll share my screen so we can go through a quick presentation. So, yeah, I'm here on behalf of Marina Belier. She's the trustee owner, and she is here tonight in the tan shirt. And she's the trustee owner of 8 St. Louis Avenue. And we are looking to add an addition over the existing garage to expand the second-floor bedroom and add a bathroom, and also to replace an existing shed with a slightly larger shed that'll be more aesthetically matched to the structure on the property. So we are in the RC 40 district, and this is a pre-existing non-conforming structure on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. As you can see from the yellow highlight, it's a pretty narrow lot. It lacks lot area frontage width, and both side yard setbacks actually overlap. So there's like a negative building envelope on this property because the left side yard setback ends inside the right yard side setback and vice versa. The existing shed and house therefore sit in a lot of the setbacks because there's no piece of the property that isn't in a setback. So we need a special permit to alter, expand, there's a little typo there, sorry about that, guys, or in the alternative to amend an existing variance, and I'll talk about that in a second, and the shed needs an alter, expand permit and a height permit also. So in 2007, an addition was put on to this house, and it was put on with a special permit and variances, and we went back through, and the lot was created in 1940, the structure was built in 1949, and so in 1982, the house became a pre-existing non-conforming structure. And so in 2007, they didn't really need variances to do what they did. This is even, oh, this is before the Diedrich case. Even back then, you didn't need a variance. It seems like they got one out of like a belt and suspenders type approach, but they really only needed a special permit to alter and expand. So it's up to this board, if you want to amend the variance, we'll take the amendment to the variance. If you want to just give us a special permit, we'll take that. Either one, I think, works. I wanted to kind of explain why we're giving you like the either/or situation. I think they gave, they got too much relief in 2007 when they didn't need that much. I have all the plans loaded up per usual. And so again, I think I just want to point out really quickly, you see the red square almost on top of the house that is all sitting above existing footprint, and then you can see on the red rectangle on the shed, there's a little jog in the existing shed showing in gray, and they're filling that jog in as part of this rebuild. Here's the aerial view, the JIS. So you have the typical alter, expand requirements. You need to either find that there is no increase to the non-conformities. Again, we are within the exact same footprint. There will be additional mass within those setbacks, but we're not getting any closer to any property line, so it's up to you whether you find it to be an increase in the non-conforming nature of the property. If not, then the addition can be done by right, not by right, but by your decision. If you do find it increases, then you need to make sure that it's not going to be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what is there currently. So again, the encroachments stay the same, the height remains under 30 feet by average grade, neighbors are separated by distance and tree cover, and it's gonna, everything's gonna match the architectural style of the existing house, both the addition and the shed. This also just shows you kind of the tree cover surrounding this property. And then if you want to go and amend the variance, you'll need to find that a literal enforcement creates a hardship. Obviously, you enforce the setbacks. This is a, it's a negative building envelope. You can't build anything out there, let alone add to it. The hardship relates to the shape of the lot. The lot was created in 1940, back when there wasn't all this minimum lot width, and so that's why it's very narrow. And granting the relief has to make sure it does not harm the public good or nullify the intent of the GZO, and, you know, this is gonna make a big deal of difference to the applicant and probably nobody else. No one's really gonna see it, and those who do are just gonna notice that the house looks a little nicer and a little more filled in. And then the last one is to alter and expand the shed. It's the same analysis as the structure, the main structure. The increase to the non-conformity has to be not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what presently exists. Again, we're just kind of filling in that missing piece of the front side of it, changing the architectural design to make it look more aesthetically pleasing and match to the main structure. It's not getting any closer to the setback than the existing shed, and we also need a height permit to allow this to be 15 feet tall, where 12 feet is allowed. Has to be consistent with neighborhood character. Again, as I've stressed, it's going to match the architecture of the house and cannot cause obstruction of views, overshadowing, et cetera. As I showed you a few slides ago, there's a lot of tree cover between this and the neighboring properties. No one, except for the applicant, is really gonna notice it on the day-to-day. We also got neighborhood support. As you can see from the blue stars, the three nearest properties have all written in favor. That's 5 St. Louis Avenue, 6 St. Louis Avenue, and 10 St. Louis Avenue. They're all in support and have wished the applicant luck on this. And so with that, again, I'm asking for a special permit to alter and expand, or in the alternative, an amendment to the existing variances. And on the shed, I'm looking for a special permit to alter and expand and a special permit to exceed maximum height, allowing 15 feet of height for the shed. Thank you very much.
Do you be arguing there's not an increase in non-conformity?
On the principal structure, we're staying in the footprint. We're not getting any closer to any property line. So if you ask the question, what's the, you know, what's the setback violation now? It's the full violation, but, you know, is it getting any closer to a property line? No. So.
Shed.
The shed, I would say there is an increase because you're filling in some space. Thank you.
Questions right now by the board?
Just a comment. We typically, Joe, I think, special permit, alter and expand, when you're adding a second story in violated setback areas, we typically expect a special permit for that.
Agreed. Okay. Any other questions? Let's take public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of the application or anyone online? Again, if you're in the audience, come forward, state your name and address, and tell us what you'd like to say. If you're in, online, raise your hand on your device, or if you're on your phone, you dial *9. Anyone to speak in favor? Seeing none? Is there anyone that would wish to speak in opposition to the application? Any opposition? See none? No one come forward? Close public testimony, and we'll enter into discussion, questions about... I think Michael's right, and there was no objection on the shed, that it is a, there is an increase in non-conformity. I have no, personally, I think granting those special permits is probably better than playing with the variances.
I agree. Yeah, I think for me, if Joel is comfortable that it was a belt and suspenders variance, and it really was not necessary at that time, and all he thinks he needs is a special permit, then I'm quite comfortable with the special permit and not playing with the variance.
Let's do, yeah, so we're gonna head down hopefully the path of alter and expand on the main structure, alter and expand on the shed, and a height exception for the shed. Those will be the three things.
I can make a motion if you want.
Nobody else? Anything to say? Okay. Go ahead, Michael.
Petitioner Marina Belier seeking special permit 1.9 and 2.4.3 to alter and expand a non-conforming residence on a non-conforming lot, special permit 3.1.6 to exceed maximum height of an accessory structure, the shed. And we, and I'm gonna leave the rest off because I don't think he needs to amend the variance, and that would be at 8 St. Louis Avenue. I would move approval of the special permit for the house, for the second-story addition to the house. It is increasing non-conformity, adding the second level. It's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. I would essentially say the same for the special permit for the shed. It is not a whole lot, but it is increasing non-conformity. It's not substantially more detrimental. And the additional three feet, I would move approval, special permit to exceed the maximum Mollawal height of 12 feet there. I think the neighbors have spoken, with the three direct neighbors have spoken with their direct approval, and there's been no opposition. So I'd move approval of all three special permits.
This is made on three special permits?
Second.
Seconded by James. Roll call vote.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Yes.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes, for all three.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes, for all three.
Mr. Parisi?
I also agree that it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood, and I vote in favor. Heard our decision's favorable, appreciate the draft.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay. Our next public hearing is the application of 77 Bridge Street LLC seeking a special permit for 1.8 and 2.3.1 to convert a single-family dwelling to a multifamily, three-dwelling unit in variance 1.7 and 3.2.1 for front yard setback at 13 and 13 R. Hammond Street. Attorney Favazza.
Thank you once again. For the record, Joel Favazza, Seaside Legal Solutions, 123 Main Street here in Gloucester. I will share my screen to bring up this presentation. I am here on behalf of 77 Bridge Street LLC, the principal Scott Salles, right here. Scott actually grew up in this house at 13, 13 R. Hammond Street in Gloucester. And here we go. So the proposed work is to add two dwelling units to the existing single-family structure. There'll be a small addition to the right side of the existing house that will allow the existing house to be split into two dwelling units that adds basically garages and a living room for each of the units. And then there'll be an addition in the rear and a second driveway, and that's the only piece of relief that's not before this board. The second driveway requires site plan approval from the planning board, so if we're successful here, we have to go to the planning board and get that second driveway approved. And so at the jump, I would say that any relief this board is inclined to get should be conditioned upon site plan approval being granted by the planning board. So for background, we are in the R10 district. That is the medium-high-density residential district. We are on a conforming lot, and there is currently a conforming single-family use, but the structure is non-conforming. It currently encroaches into the front yard setback. It's about 7.6 feet away from the front property line, and 20 feet is the requirement here. So the relief requested is a change of use special permit and a variance. And the reason why this is a variance, not a special permit to alter and expand, is because we are changing the use of the house. If this was, for example, just gonna be in addition to add those garages in the deck to the single family, it would just be a special permit because it is a pre-existing non-conforming structure. However, when you change the use of a structure, the Gloucester zoning ordinance has been interpreted to require you to basically re-permit existing encroachments, which is why we need a variance for the front face of the house that's been there since it was constructed. So I have all the plans loaded up per usual, so anyone needs to refer back to those, we can flip back to them.
Hey, Joel, just a quick question, Michael Nyman. If you were converting to a two-family from a one-family, would you still need the same variance?
So traditionally, Gloucester has used the rule that if you're jumping from one use line to another, so that would be from single-family to conversion with exterior changes, you would still need it. The dimensional requirements, I would point out, though, for a single, a two, and a three do not change, so it's the same front yard setback regardless of those three different types of unit count. The JIS, as you can see, is a fairly large lot, especially in comparison to the neighborhood, and this is the aerial view, and a picture from the street, and another from the driveway and from the rear. So to change the use, we have the 1.8.3 seven-factor test to make sure that the proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the GZO, and is not going to adversely affect the zoning district, neighborhood, or the city as to outweigh the benefits. Social, economic, and community needs served by proposal. This is gonna add two new dwelling units into Gloucester's housing stock. As you know, back in 2017, we were told we needed to add over 600 units of housing before 2022, and we added less than 300 in that time, and that includes the Dolbin Apartments, which took up about 225 of that 300. The R10 district is an appropriate area for allowable three-family use. It's actually called for in the description of the R10 district. Traffic flow and safety, there's gonna be limited impact on traffic flow and safety. There are two driveways to create extra parking. It meets the minimum requirement for 4.5 compliant spaces with five garage spaces in total, and I'll talk more about that in a moment. Adequacy of utilities. The utilities are sufficient at locusts for proposed additional dwelling units, so no issue there. Neighborhood character and social structure, so there's no negative impact to the neighborhood character and social structure. This renovates an existing home. This adds much-needed housing to East Gloucester, and these are gonna be, you know, three-bedroom units that would encourage family use. As I remember from my time in the school committee, when we were closing the East Gloucester School, there were less than 70 children in the East Gloucester School who actually lived in East Gloucester because families have pretty much been priced out of living in East Gloucester. And so this will add two more three-bedroom units in the East Gloucester area. There are multiple two and three-family structures, including a condominium complex in the surrounding neighborhood, and even one of the letters in opposition that you receive, you know, goes to combat this point, and then right after says, points out there's four two-families nearby and one three-family very close to this property. So even the opposition admits that there's, you know, a mix of types of dwelling units out here. And the lot area is nearly three times was required in the R10 for this number of dwelling units. You need 2,000 square feet of lot area per dwelling unit, so for a three-family, you need 6,000 square feet of lot area. This property has over 17,000 square feet, so we're at 2.86 times the required lot area for three units. So if anything, this is one of the least dense properties per, you know, what the table would have you do for three families. Quality to the natural environment, the property's already developed. There will be some loss of yard area through the addition. There's no wetland resource areas on site, and the yard area has been preserved to the greatest extent possible. Again, the addition pokes out to the right a little bit and covers some existing driveway area, but there is still so much lot area on the property that will remain uncovered. For potential fiscal impact, this again is the win-win. The applicant obviously will be able to derive additional funds from the two new units, and it creates new growth tax revenue for the City of Gloucester, which is the only way to increase the levy without hitting that 2.5% ceiling every year. And the most recent factor test is the vulnerability of flooding and flood damage. The locus is around elevation 50, so it is not in a flood zone. So for the front yard variance, again, it encroaches, the current house encroaches 12.5 feet into their required 20-foot front yard, so 7.5 feet or 7'6" off of the Hammond Street property line. The addition to the right side does not come any further toward the street. It maintains that line, and actually maintains that line mostly for a lower-level garage. It's kind of like, it's partially buried as you look at it from the street, and then an unenclosed deck above it. And again, we're only doing this instead of a special permit to alter, expand because of the change in the use. So as far as literal enforcement, creating a hardship, again, this would require the applicant to remove 12 and 1/2 feet of the existing house, basically, you know, chop the front off, and I bet the structure probably couldn't handle that, so now you're talking about total demolition of a house that otherwise just needs renovation. Does that hardship relate to the soil shape or topography of the structure, if that any question? Well, yeah, the lot and the building are where they are and where they have been for decades, if not a century. There's also a lot of ledge in the rear of the lot, so the idea of even if money wasn't a factor and you could just demolish this house and push it all back, you're running into even more ledge than the proposed addition would, and that's gonna create another financial hardship. So it'd be arguing that even under a total reconstruction, still wanna be closer to the street. And you go, okay, well, if we let the house stay close to the street, are you gonna harm the public good or nullify the intent of the ordinance? Again, it allows an existing structure to remain where it is. Most of the addition is the unenclosed deck or the lower garage. The actual enclosed portion is 15 feet from the property line in the first level, so the habitable enclosed space is 15 feet back instead of the 7.5 feet that the old house is at. And it also matches the location of other structures in the street. If you go on Hammond Street, all the houses are tucked up much closer than 20 feet to the property line. If you look in the bottom right-hand corner, you'll see the blue line is the existing front face of the house. The orange line would be the garage and deck carrying that line, and the green line shows you the enclosed space that is pushed further back from the street than the existing house. So we also had some neighborhood So we also had some neighborhood concerns and I want to go through those real quickly. So one was about parking. And so I want to remind the board that the zoning ordinance tells you what adequate parking is. And it says that if you have four and a half spaces for a three-family in the R-ten district, you have enough parking. We have a two-car garage for units one and two and we have a single-car garage for unit three. So that meets the requirement. There are five compliance spaces. But I'm going to show you how you can actually hold fourteen cars on this site. So here's a site plan. You can throw one in unit three's garage and then two, three, four in the driveway behind it. You got five and six in unit two's garage, seven and eight in unit one's garage. Then you get nine and ten behind unit two's garage door, eleven and twelve behind unit one's garage door. And for good measure, you can get thirteen and fourteen blocking them in. So if there's ever a snow emergency, a graduation party, something where there's a, you know, a lot of guests coming to this property, this would be fourteen off-street parking spaces. Again, they're not compliant. It requires people moving cars around, but the standard is five compliance spaces. We have that and more. And during a snow emergency, large event, you can get fourteen cars off the street and onto this property. Another concern was about noise coming from the unenclosed porches. So the deck on the front of unit one is about fifty feet from the house across the street, about sixty feet from the house to the southwest. If you're facing the house, it'd be to the right. Unit two's deck is dimensionally compliant and is over sixty feet from the house to the northeast, which would be the house to the left as you look at it. And unit three's deck is fully dimensionally compliant and is over a hundred and twenty feet from the house to the south. So I want to remind the board, we are in the medium-high-density residential district. And the idea that an unenclosed deck between fifty and a hundred and twenty feet away from the nearest houses would somehow be too dense or too much congestion, I think, is, you know, not really in line with what this R-ten district is designed to have. It's medium-high-density residential development here. And I also want to point out again, as I mentioned earlier, that right there in the definition talks about where appropriate, two-family and multifamily development is encouraged in the R-ten district. And as for where appropriate, I don't think it gets much more appropriate than a almost three times larger lot than is necessary with way more parking than is required. And then one of the other complaints was about height. Again, the calculations are in the plan set. The highest part of the highest roof line is not more than thirty feet above average grade, so the height is compliant. So again, zoning ordinance tells you what acceptable height is and we have stayed under that threshold. So to call this building too tall would be unfair and would be, you know, directly contrary to what the ordinance itself says. The last thing I will mention is that, going back to the change of use, there've been very few changes to the zoning ordinance in the last few years or so. A lot were proposed and a lot were knocked down. One of the ones that got through was to make it easier to build three families in the R-ten district. This used to be a city council process and the city council made it one-stop shopping under a very, under a lower special permit threshold of the zoning board. And they also used to have increased setbacks and lot area requirements for three-family. And the city council did away with all of that and said, we're going to treat three families, like two families and one family, going forward to try and encourage this type of development. And so that's enabled people like my client to come forward and say, hey, we can help with this housing shortage. We have a very large lot. We have plenty of space for parking and we have plenty of room to build these additions to add these extra dwelling units. So we're kind of right in line with what the city council has dictated should be done, again, in the high or medium-high-density residential district. So again, we're looking for a use permit and we're looking for a variance for the front yard setback. And I thank you again and I'll stop my sharing.
Questions by the board? Hey, we'll have, open up to public testimony. And ask anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application to please come forward. Anyone in favor or if you're on participating remotely, again, you hit your raise hand device or dial star nine if you're on a cell phone. Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Are you seeing none? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application? So we've got two hands up. Again, if you're in the audience, you got to come forward and give your name and address and tell us what your objection is. And then we also have a couple of people online that wish to speak. So I'll go take one of the online ones first. Hotzel, could you bring in, please? If people are going to want to speak, you can come up and get in line, save some time.
Ready?
Yes.
Sorry, camera. Oh, can you see me? You can't see me? Okay.
See your picture. We need you to give your name and address for the record and tell us what's your objection.
Yeah, hi, I'm Leontine Hartzell. I live at Ten Hammond Street, across the street from Thirteen, the proposed development. The one issue that has not been, well, there's several issues that have not been addressed, but the fact is, is that each of the three proposed new units are basically four-bedroom units. There are three bedrooms each with a study downstairs, which could easily be a fourth bedroom. And so you're looking at the potential for twenty-four cars if each bedroom had two adults in it who have a car. And we don't know if the owner, when, if he's given permission to do this, would be renting it out on a short-term basis. In the summer, you could possibly have twenty-four people rotating in and out of there with all those cars. And the noise. And the other issue about the open porches is that Hammond Street is a steep hill and it's like an amphitheater with the noise. And so the noise is amplified. So with the distances that were noted by the attorney, it's still creating a density, a population density on a street where the houses are already close together that I believe the traffic, the noise, the amount of cars and extra parking is going to be a problem. The owner of Thirteen Hammond Street already reconstructed number nine, rebuilt number nine Hammond Street. And it's very close to the street and it's a very tall building and it's completely out of character with the neighborhood. I bought Ten Hammond Street nine years ago and if I had known there was going to be, if there was a three-family across the street, I would not have purchased it for what I purchased it for. And I completely renovated the interior of my house without touching the exterior. Our neighborhood has a beautiful character and there's only one three-family across the street from Thirteen Hammond that has been there a very long time and the tenants on the first two levels have been there for over twenty years as well as it used to be owner-occupied. All the other, as I said in the letter that I wrote to you, all the other two families, the four other two families on the street are all owner-occupied. And there are twelve single-family houses that are, the majority of them, like ninety percent of them are owner-occupied. And so to put a three-family on this street where you have the possibility of having to blast because of ledge, the, and the fact that if he is allowed to build as close to the street as the current house, but higher, you're going to have this structure that looms over the street. And Nine Hammond Street already does that and it's, it's a eyesore. And there's already extra visitors who come to Nine Hammond Street who don't have anywhere to park and they park illegally actually, right on Thirteen Hammond Street's sidewalk. So we've got, we've already got a very dense neighborhood. And my suggestion would be to go back to the drawing board and possibly put in a two-family or renovate the single-family that's there and sell it. The owner tried this out last year and obviously didn't have any success. So I believe that this would really, really be detrimental to the neighborhood. And I've spoken to almost all of our neighbors and everyone's very concerned about the noise, the, of, when people live there and the parking issue and it being an eyesore and it'll be a little higher. But being too, as close to the street as the proposal would really be a bad idea for this neighborhood and it's going to lower our property values and that's not a good thing. So I appreciate your time and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Want to remind everyone, we're going to limit to approximately three minutes apiece. And if we could not say the same things over and try to focus on the zoning issue, you know, whether somebody tried to sell a house a year ago or not is irrelevant to our discussion. So let's try to, try to stay on target.
Really?
Next up, was up first, was online, Meli Pionka. I'm not sure. And that's the only other one with a hand raised right now and then we'll, we'll go in order over here after.
Hello?
Yes.
Ah, my name is Mary Ellen Lepianca. I live at Seventeen Hammond Street. I'm opposed to the project because the street, I've been living here since nineteen ninety-seven and the street has already become overdeveloped. It's a fairly heavily trafficked, trafficked street, not, not well-maintained so far by the, by the city, as so far as I can tell. And the, the, the character of the neighborhood has already been altered. I hate to see it modified even further or, or, you know, I might have been looking for a different, a different place to be. And that little patch of lawn is one of the few spaces on that street, on this street that is not developed. And I would hate to see that lost. I'm also concerned about extra traffic and driving and the traffic and the parking. I think that it's different. This is just obviously an income property and it's not as if the owner is going to live there or that he's trying to expand to accommodate his own family or anything. And, and, you know, to me, that matters. So, and I don't want to repeat what the previous speaker said, so I'll stop talking, but I just want to say that I am opposed to the development.
Thank you. First person up in live here? Yeah, because no one at home will hear you otherwise.
Is it working now?
Yeah, you got to hold it close.
Okay. My name is Carl Frank. I live at Fifteen Haskell Street, which is around the corner up the hill. And the point that I want to make is entirely factual and I'll take less than a minute. Counsel, who is your client? May I correct you? The client, according to the record, is a corporation. And the counsel represented this case.
That's irrelevant.
Who is, it says that the counsel is counsel for LLC, for an LLC. But counsel made the point that this lady grew up on the street.
He kindly answered your question, which he didn't have to. It's irrelevant who owns the property. This is a zoning hearing. It doesn't matter who owns it, how they own it, what they own it in.
There is, there is a prejudice in favor of granting grants to residents who are living in their own house.
That's your opinion, not the opinion of the board.
It's my observation.
Not to the opinion of the board.
Thank you. I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. Next?
We good? All right. My name's Tom Robinson Cox. I live at Five Haskell Court. I'm in a butter to the butter. I think Mr. Favazza made a very good presentation as far as it went. I think that he failed to demonstrate that there, with the existing building, is a financial hardship to the owner. I can recognize that somebody who owns.
It's not in our purview.
It says right here, standard to be applied. Literal enforcement of the provisions of this ordinance would involve substantial hardship to the applicant, financial or otherwise.
That's related to hardship of the land, property, topography. That's not related.
He's asking for a variance for a setback, which relates to the topography of the land.
To land only, not, you're talking money. It's not.
No, I'm saying this says, right here, one point seven, standard to be applied. Variances are to be granted only upon a written determination by the Zoning Board of Appeals that literal enforcement of the provisions of this ordinance would involve substantial hardship to the applicant, financial or otherwise. I'm quoting from your own statute.
You don't understand what it means. It's to do with hardship of, the hardship has to derive from the property, not because somebody wants to make money, okay?
The hardship.
The property, if, if following the ordinance, not granting the variance, would make it unrealistically expensive for the person to have a right to live in their home and expand it, which is granted by the state of Massachusetts. That's what they're talking about. They're not talking about a guy maximizing profit.
Okay, I will grant you that. Forget the profit motive, but what you just said, he is certainly entitled to live in a single-family house and improve it and does not require a variance to do that because he, because the property is a, is a legal, non-conforming use.
In the state of Massachusetts.
As a single-family, as a three-family, it is not.
When zoning came in, it made over seventy-five percent of the homes in Gloucester non-conforming.
But they're legal.
At the time, in chapter forty-two of the state laws, general laws, made the provision to allow people to get a special permit to alter and expand a non-conforming structure on a non-conforming lot so that they can expand and use their property the way they wished it.
So you're, so you're willing, you're willing to ignore the standards to be applied?
These things were a long, long time.
Well, I've been a real estate professional myself for a long, long time.
I'm not a real estate professional.
Well, there's a difference between you and me.
I'm a zoning professional.
Okay, well, it says right here that it should, it would involve substantial hardship to the applicant, financial or otherwise. The only reason he will, that he needs this variance is to change the use from a single-family to a three-family. And the, his attorney, his attorney said specifically, he will benefit from the rents derived therefrom.
He said the city benefit from.
No, he said he will develop.
What he said, he said both. Now, can we stick?
Bingo, he said both. My objection is that he has not demonstrated a financial hardship to use the building as it exists and therefore a variance is not required.
He's not required to show a financial hardship.
He is. He is required to show substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to convert this from a single-family to a three-family. It's so-so in your zoning ordinance.
Hey Joe, I think we're, I think Tom is repeating and you're repeating, so hopefully we can't.
He refuses to acknowledge the law.
So hopefully we don't continue to repeat the same things being said, Tom, respectfully, please.
Okay, I wish to be respected too and not be told that I'm not, that I, that I'm, that I'm wrong because I know I'm right. Thank you for your understanding, but I do object to your interpretation of the law.
Tom, you've told us three times. We got it, man, honest, we got it.
I'm not telling you any, I'm not making any decision yet. I was just trying to advise you when you.
And the other criteria, which others have brought up and I'll just only mention briefly in passing, it will not generally affect the rest of the neighborhood. Will, without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the ordinance, aren't the character of the neighborhood? And by increasing the density in this particular street, you are adversely affecting the character. you are adversely affecting the character of the neighborhood. I rest my case.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello. Hi, my name is Matt Service. I'm a resident at three Haskell Court. I object to this zoning variance on the basis of increased noise due to distance from the street. I think that's going to amplify traffic for all the people in the neighborhood. I don't believe that the project matches the character of the neighborhood. That's been said previously, so I won't repeat that. And lastly, the height increase for the property is going to impact my neighbors' views. So I object on that basis as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please. We do have one more online that we'll get to.
Jack McKenon, one Blake Court, lived there thirty-eight years, over four hundred feet from the proposed structures. Traffic, density, setbacks is totally incongruent to the neighborhood. It would be I'm all for somebody improving their property, creating more space. But with the required square footage area, you might say aerial rights completely incongruent to the neighborhood. And you talk about seventy children going to East Gloucester, about the older people of which I'm one, living in the neighborhood, going to get clipped by cars going up and down, heavy traffic. I rest my case.
Thank you.
John Lowe from sixteen Hammond Street. I live directly across from the proposed units. And I oppose it due to the fact that it's a one family house on a large lot. And now they're going to have three families living in that same lot, which is going to be extremely small. Yeah, I'm going to have to look out of my house at this structure. I just can't see how it can be any good to the neighborhood. It's a brand new structure. It's not it's not a house that's being remodeled. It's going to be brand new, basically, three of them. And I don't know many families with children that are going to be able to afford a brand new condominium. And that's just the facts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sir?
Frank Bellini, fifteen Hammond Street. I am the closest a butter to this house. And with apologies for speaking in opposition, Scott, I did have the retaining wall fixed. So wouldn't my garage wouldn't end up in your lot? Anyway. Besides the issues that have been raised, I see four or five houses within several hundred feet that once this precedent is set, could do the same thing with the motivation being selling for the highest price or garnishing the highest amount of rent. I feel like the Marriott could move in next door to me. And no one might care. If we are a medium to high density location right now, as learned counsel educated us about, and gee, I wish I could type half as fast as you talk, but I think I caught most of what you said. Do we go to a high density? And what does that take? And where would the zoning board draw the line? Thank you.
Yeah, with with regard to the density of this project, he's he's not exceeding the density. He has seventeen thousand square feet. He only needs two thousand square feet for a lot. It isn't the zoning boards not making that. That's the city ordinance. People can come up and fight the city ordinance to make those dimensions bigger, and then we'll have no housing for any of our future kids or anything. But I'm just saying that's what that's what the density is really not even in this chart, close. Anyway. Anybody else? We do have one more online. Jane M. Bring her up. Well, we got one online first. Jane first, yeah. Everyone has the equal rights.
Hi. My name is Rod.
Sir. There's a person online ahead of you. Jane M.
Hello?
Yes, hi.
Yes. Hello, this is Jane Milatello. And I live at seven Hammond Street. Family home. My family lived here for over a hundred years. Myself, not all that many. Again, there's a number of issues that have been raised. One of the concerns we have on, I heard the amphitheater called, we live on a hill. The noise reverberates throughout. There are three new decks being put on that are open. They are facing directly towards my home. And that there's a house in between the two of us that Scott, I think Scott owns that one as well. And but the all all that noise is going to head that way. Plus, it's right on the street. I have real concerns about the parking. I know there's a lot of parking with people can park on top of each other. But it's not just the parking. It's when the it's when the delivery trucks come. It's when the you know, service people come, they park on the wrong side of the street, which is the same as thirteen. There's only parking on one side of the street on on Hammond Street. And as it is, our road is well used, well used, up and down all day long, especially at going to work time and coming back time, as far as any construction that's going on, well used, that same street. And I have noticed more than once that truck that cars that are already in parking areas on the street, including nine Hammond Street, they have company. They have people there and the cars are parked and they hang over on the sidewalk. That means during snowstorms. That means during good weather bad. And if you were walking by, you have to go out into the street and that that counts for the school kids that are dropped off and picked up at the foot of the hill. Water is another huge issue where we live right now. We have a real issue with water. And it has to do with redirecting. So water is going to come down that hill and it comes down. It could be five feet wide coming down on that side of the street. Plus, in the back, there's a spring and there's water that just comes right from Rocky Pastor Road all the way down. It's a real detriment to the neighborhood right now. I know that two neighbors have just invested one invested twenty-seven thousand, the other just invested twenty thousand to help to take care of the water issue that's pouring into their basements and over their land. We are part of that. We get some of that water into coming down into our yard as well because it's been redirected by people building out and clearing the land. That's a big issue. And I'm real concerned if there's going to be any blasting in the ledge. My back my back wall is a ledge and it's the same ledge that's connected to thirteen Hammond Street. I want to know if there's going to be any blasting there and what's what are the rules and regulations around that? And as far as character for the neighborhood, you know, it's been a beautiful neighborhood, great character. And what I can see is that something that's going to look like a mini motel coming in. So those are my big pro those are my biggest concerns. And I'd like to know what the board can or will do about those. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Hello. My name is Ron Guler. I live at twenty-two Hammond Street up the hill. We have a I've known the Sala family my whole life, all the children, the parents, they're they're a wonderful family. Although I I do not agree with a three family. I'd like to see him go back to drawing board for a two family. I know Gloucester needs housing. I'm a real estate agent. I understand that. Hammond Street is a tough street to park on. There's cars parked on both sides of the street occasionally down the street also. You have the tiki boat down the bottom of the street that advertises when they out to park on Hammond Street. You're backing hot cars up the street. All those cars, my house, I have a one one lane driveway. We park in tandem. Me and my wife are constantly moving cars. It's a pain. There's an awful lot of cars backing in and out. And Jack, he has children across the street and the people that you have a lot of there's a lot of traffic. I don't think it I don't think a three fits the neighborhood. I think it's wrong. I like Scott. I don't even want to look over at him right now because I care for him a lot. But I wish that he go back to the drawing board and come up with a nice two that would work and still increase housing. So, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? I don't see anyone on the line. Hearing none. We'll close public testimony. We'll go to rebuttal by the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will be as brief as I can be. I'm just going to put my presentation back up so I can refer to a few slides. So at first, as I had mentioned previously, a majority, not all, but a majority of the concerns were about things that are, you know, asked and answered by the GZO. Concerns and some of frankly, I think, you know, this project might even be addressing some of the problems that were spoken about. So again, as to parking, the ordinance tells us we need five parking spaces. I've shown you five parking spaces. I've also shown you how to get another nine cars off the street. So the idea that right now there may be a problem with people when visiting thirteen Hammond parking on the sidewalk, the creation of up to fourteen parking spaces, I would assume is going to make that less of a problem to the degree it is a problem currently. And regardless that the qualification, the requirement is five spaces, and those have been provided. Some people, again, have spoken about the height of the structure. At least one person was concerned about views being blocked. Again, views only come into consideration when there is a height permit being requested, when you exceed the maximum allowable height. This is not exceeding that. Views, et cetera, are not one of the criteria taken into account for a project like this. For the variance, the question of hardship and how it ties into a financial hardship, the issue here is that a three family, a compliant, dimensionally compliant three family would fit onto this lot. But it would require the demolition of the existing house and would also, as one neighbor was concerned about, require much more blasting. So that is a hardship relating to the existing shape and structure, location of the structure and a topographical geological hardship. So those are the hardships, not that it's, you know, a three family doesn't work because the lot's too small or the family doesn't work because there's enough parking. It's that, yeah, three family works on this property. Again, we need six thousand square feet for three dwelling units. We have two point eight times that amount. It's that to make a compliant three family, you're demolishing a house that does not need to be demolished and you're blasting way more ledge than needs to be blasted. So that's the hardship for allowing a variance to be granted to keep the front face of the house where it is. And again, when we go back to the I have to go through all these cars. Hold on. When we go back to the plan showing the street view. I went too far. I'm so sorry. That's the lower portion of this plan. You'll see that the garage, which is matching the front of the house, is partially buried by the slope of the hill itself. So the the new construction that is the same distance from the road as the main house is down here. Again, this new wall up here is fifteen feet back, which is twice as far back as the front face of the house. And again, this extra little bit of height on the peak of the roof, it's a pitched roof pitching back from the road. So it's not going to be a sheer wall at thirty feet above average grade at the road. It's pitching back away from the road to get to that increased height. So again, this the tests before you are about not whether this is going to make everybody happy. This is not about whether the entire neighborhood supports this. This is about will the negatives that you may perceive from this to the degree that there are negatives, do they outweigh the benefits of adding two units of housing? And, you know, nine additional parking spaces from what's available right now and what's required going forward? Is that outweighed by legitimate concerns that have been voiced to you tonight? If not, then we've met the test for both the variance and the special permits. And I will leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion by the board.
I just think it's important to note that it's under thirty feet. So it's outside of our purview to talk about views. As Attorney Fafaza just pointed out, it's not a we can't vote on what it looks like. I mean, they're within their right to build a box. This isn't a box. But again, I can't even weigh in on what it looks like. It's not within our purview.
Some of the points, and we 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 see this at a lot of hearings. And the people's concern, blasting is not before us. We have no say in that. And there are laws in the city ordinances that regulate the that as one of the women. Jane M., she had questioned. That's all controlled by the DPW. Any new building has to absorb all its own water. So there's not going to be any increased runoff. If anything, there's going to be a decrease in runoff onto the street or to other people's properties because every part of a new building must collect and deal with its own water. So people don't know that. And a lot of times they they try raise these points. People, when we talk about, well, go back to the drawing board. Well, go back to the drawing board. He can just tear the house down and build a three family in the middle of the lot, a big ugly thing, and there won't be much anyone can do about it. So I guess you look at what what's is this better, you know, than what he can legally do? And it's the biggest lot in the whole neighborhood. I mean, there were it it deserves to have a few, two or three families on it. It's seventeen thousand five hundred feet. So those were just some points that that I made note of. The the parking, again, the view, as James stated, is not before us. You know, if you don't exceed the height, we have no say in whether it completely blocks your view unless they were trying to go too close to your property in need of relief or above the height. And neither of those things are happening in this scenario. So believe me, we listen to this and we do not set precedent. Every hearing is taken on its own merit. We've all been out there and made site visits at this property. It won't regulate what gets done on a street over. There were I didn't see many lots even close to the size of this one on Hammond Street. And just some of the points I wanted to make. Any other member of the
Yeah, I yeah, I just have a comment about neighborhood character. I empathize with people who've been there for thirty or forty, fifty years. I think one lady grew up there for, you know, family and stuff like that. City Council decided that in in this area of the city that three families are allowed. So if there aren't any three families there now, I know there's one, but if there if there aren't any three families there now and City Council has said they can be there, then the neighborhood character is going to change. It's just that simple. Whether it's this house or some other house, that's not a reason to, you know, just grant something at this, you know, that's being requested. But the neighborhood character is going to change. We've heard the same arguments in other parts of the city when people want to bring in two families, when all the houses are single families. And people are allowed to put two families in many of those areas of the city now, and people don't like it because they've never had any two families there. So totally understandable. I'm sure if I was living there, I might think the same. But it's not us who decided that three families can be in there. It's our just it's up to us to decide if special permits and variances are reasonable when they're being asked for in this area. I think I just want to make that clear, that that we're not the ones that are doing that.
I would add the variance that's being requested isn't for any of the new part. It's just to maintain the house that's there now. There's the front yard violation. And rather than tell them, tear it down and move it back eight, twelve and a half more feet, that's what they're asking for the variance for.
Right, that's the hardship right there.
Yeah.
You're not going to tear down the structure just to meet that setback. You know, or at least make the argument that's that's the hardship. If you look at all the setbacks, everything is staying exactly the same. And I, you know, I sympathize with this neighborhood, seeing that the traffic, you know, I I And I, you know, I sympathize with this neighborhood seeing that the traffic, you know, I, I went there today and I looked at it and I know I'm very familiar with that neighborhood. The, the sheer fact that this lot can provide all the required parking spaces, which is not even before us. I know that's one of the bigger concerns of the neighborhood is, you know, the abundance of cars overflowing into the sidewalk. That's just not the case here and we can't just assume every bedroom is going to have a vehicle. I, I don't, you know, I don't know how, how you can make that determination. So the fact that they have the, the parking, uh, they're not exceeding the height. They're not increasing the setbacks. You know, economically, they're improving the housing stock. I think this was something that they thought carefully through. Uh, how can they get the best use out of this property? You know, respectfully, that's their property and they're allowed to do it as they please. So I, I know you hear the concerns of everyone else saying it's going to look like a motel. You know, from the street side looking in, it looks like a, a house with a garage and a deck on the right going further back where it's not going to be seen from the street, in my opinion. Doesn't seem like it, it represents that type of character. And I, I think they did a good job designing the building to try to keep the character of the neighborhood within, within that community. So, uh, you know, for those reasons, I can understand and see, uh, why the owner went this way. And I, I do sympathize for the neighborhood. It's, it seems like it's one of those situations where you, you want to hear everybody's concerns and I think the board did do that. But the reality is, uh, I don't think they're asking for more than what the neighborhood is concerned about. And then, and to the, um, to the decks, I know there's a lot of concern with noise. I, I mean, the decks are small. I'm looking at them. I mean, how many people could you fit comfortably? Three, four people? You know, it's not like they're going to have 20 people on this deck screaming. I mean, I'm not saying they could or they couldn't, but the reality or, or just trying to think like, hey, you know, the noise complaint. I'm just trying to address some of these issues on, on, on my end and how I perceive it. So I, I can understand your concern on that, but, you know, a small deck like that, just to remind, I, I don't think it's going to be a jailbreaker for me.
Uh, one more comment from me. I specifically asked Joel about, um, changing use with the variance. So I know that there's, uh, some interest in the neighbors, uh, that this would be a two-family instead of a three-family. I totally get it, totally hear it. But that wouldn't change, um, the need for the variance. Um, so I don't, I don't see that the hardship is going to change one way or the other, even if a two-family is more desirable for some of the neighbors. We're faced with the same sort of decision-making process uh, about whether to grant the variance or not, uh, whether it's a two-family or a three-family.
Yeah, they, they can make the building just as big and just make it a two-family. That's not, you know what I mean? So.
Annie, anybody else want to add? Are we ready? Ed, Ron?
I, I had just a slight addition to the setback, um, discussion that, which is the principal request here. I, when I did the site visit, I looked at all of the buildings up and down the street. I think they were all within one or two feet of being the same setback. So to ask one person to move their house back is unreasonable and it's not what we have typically done. We don't tell, we don't tell people to move their houses back. So, you know, if that's the neighborhood standard and that's where it is now, we typically approve the variance.
Okay, and I guess we'll be ready to go for a motion. I, I would make one more comment. The piece of this, that's the conversion from one family to three-family is a special permit. And the bar that they have to get up to, which is fairly easy, is will this project be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood? And the neighborhood doesn't just mean Hammond Street. It means the zoning district in general. A lot of people used to get focused on two or three houses around a project. That's not what the definition of the neighborhood means. And, and so that's what we're judging. Is this substantially more detrimental? He's addressed the parking. The drainage is in our ordinance. The blasting is in our ordinance. It's not above the height. I, I don't see an argument other than just not liking it to say that it was more detriment, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what presently exists. And I think that's what we always have to go back to when we're dealing with a special permit.
Yeah, I think the special permit for use, uh, is the seven factors, the 1.8.3.
Yeah, which we're addressed. Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Anyone, uh, ready to make a motion?
I will make the attempt. Go ahead.
I move that petitioner 77 Bridge Street LLC seeking a special permit 1.8 and 2.3.1 to convert a single-family dwelling to a multi-family, three-dwelling units and a variance 1.7 and 3.2.1 for a front yard setback at 13-13R Hammond Street be approved in all parts.
A motion made for special permit and a variance. You second.
Yeah, I would, I would second that. And I think that the, uh, factors for special use, uh, for change of use, the seven factors that were listed out by Joel, I think, uh, he adequately covered those. Uh, and I think he adequately made a case for hardship for the variance. So I would, uh, second special permits and variance.
We have a motion made and seconded for a special permit convert one, one to three and a variance for front yard setback. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes, for both.
Mr. Canavo?
Yes.
Mr. Gelati?
Uh, for the reasons of which we're within my purview to vote on, um, I vote yes.
Mr. Prisson?
I also vote in favor. You've heard our decisions favorable. Put together a decision.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have two more hearings. They're both regarding outdoor seating. The first is the petitioner Longway Realty LLC seeking a special permit 1.8 and 2.3.4, subsection nine, for outdoor seating and a special permit 1.10 and 4.1.2 to allow a lesser number of off-street parking spaces at 226 Washington Street.
All right. For the record, my name is Joel Favazza. I'm an attorney at Seaside Legal Solutions, 123 Main Street. I'll get my screen share going for this application. Let's people make their way out. So the property owner is Longway Realty LLC. The applicant is the Saltwater Grill. That is the tenant at the property. It's the existing restaurant. And, uh, what they're looking to do is add a seasonal outdoor 24-seat dining area on the front left corner of the restaurant. And, uh, this dining area has been here previously. It started when the relaxed COVID pandemic regulations were in place. And this year, when they went to set everything back up and go for their inspection, the Special Services Department said, hey, what are these outside tables about? And they kind of said, well, we always do this. He goes, well, COVID's over. You need to get the, the real permit. So we're here to get the real permit. And the licensing board has already permitted liquor service out in this area as they have for the years previous. We are in the EB District, um, and we're basically, you know, with the old friendlies. We know where we are, right? We are in a flood zone, but the structure and the proposed seating are outside the flood zone itself. And so we are looking for a change of use special permit, which allows for, um, a restaurant with outdoor dining. And we need a special permit to reduce required parking. Now, the reduction is for 26 spaces. We're only deleting four spaces while the outdoor seating is in place. But the requirement, you know, basically the place is already 22 spaces short, believe it or not. And so to go take four more away makes it 26 spaces short, and I'll go through that. So per usual, here are all the floor plans. You can see in the bottom left corner, the outdoor dining. There's the GIS of the property. And, uh, the property is kind of funny. You see, it actually surrounds the RE/MAX building on all sides, which is, I haven't, we've seen before, but it was interesting to go through this one. And so here's a picture. And so we've got two standards. Um, it's 1.8.3 for the use, which is a seven-factor test. So this serves a social economic need by allowing for an existing restaurant to continue servicing patrons outside. It received great customer reviews for the outdoor seating in seasons past and it's one of the draws that brings people to Saltwater Grill. Child flow and safety, um, the dining area is outside the parking lot or the, the travel lanes, rather. Um, it's going to be protected by crash-rated barriers. We're proposing that the barriers be approved by the building inspector, which we've done previously. Um, and although there's parking relief requested, because this outdoor area has existed previous seasons, it's, the proof's kind of in the pudding. There's never been a traffic issue or a parking issue at this property when the outdoor dining has been active before. And again, we're looking to, um, we're suggesting that any relief be conditioned the same way that you did Drift a few years ago, that you did Yellow on the Water a few years ago, that the dining area be, um, guarded by, um, barriers to be approved by the building inspector. Just to give you a flavor for what we're likely to do here, it'll probably be Jersey barriers or like, or the water-filled Jersey barriers. We're not looking to drive anything down into the actual parking lot itself. We want to make sure that when the outdoor dining season is over, those parking spaces can be restored easily. So now that for other restaurants, um, people have done bollards or weighted planters, that sort of thing. They have some sort of post that will go down. These would most likely be Jersey barriers, um, or water barriers. And again, we would happily conduct, you know, accept a condition that says the building inspector must deem them sufficient before they can begin using the outdoor space. Um, adequacy of utilities, you know, a little bit of extra lighting associated with this. Otherwise, it's the same show it has been. Neighborhood character and social structure. We're in the EB District. It's always been a restaurant my entire life. I'm not sure what it was before that, but it's been a restaurant for at least 30 years. And, um, we are just trying to maintain a popular outdoor dining space that has been in use for several years now. And actually, although I don't think they were ever permitted, friendlies did have tables out there. I don't think they had table service, but you see it like to-go ice cream. You go sit down out there also for what it's worth. Um, quality of the natural environment. It's a fully developed paved site. No change there. Fiscal impact. Again, this helps, um, Saltwater Grill take advantage of the busy season. This is one of the draws to the restaurant, the outdoor seating. And the city gets a piece of the pie. Every extra meal they sell to an outdoor patron gets a meals tax assessed to it. Vulnerability to flooding. So again, all of the properties in the flood zone, this building is not and this outdoor seating is not. And again, if there was ever an issue, it's just outdoor seating. You know, it can be brought inside. It can be moved so it doesn't, you know, wash away if there's going to be some sort of king tide of a storm event this summer, right? You just move it up to the higher spot in the lot. So then for the parking special permit, again, you know, I don't know where Gloucester got its parking ordinance, but it's like, always to me like they went to Liberty Mall or 114 and that's where they decided how to set their numbers. So for this restaurant, um, Saltwater Grill would need 52 off-street parking spaces. And then Jasmine Garden needs another 37. So that'd be 89 total parking spaces. Right now there are 67. And again, functionally, it's been fine and we imagine will continue to be fine. But per the ordinance, it's 20, it'll be 26 spaces deficient. So we would need a 26-space, um, reduction. And the math there was we gave Jasmine Garden all of the spaces they need. So it's okay, Jasmine needs 37. Let's assume all 37 are being used by Jasmine Garden. What does that leave left over for Saltwater Grill? And then we went for the reduction there. Um, the condition there is you have to make a determination that the decreased number of spaces will be in harmony. And so again, um, even though it's a reduction of 26, it's really just a loss of four. It's been proven to work without a problem in previous years. And again, we're in this area where it's not like, um, there's a residential street behind it, but there's no real on-street parking. So in the event the parking lot was full, you'd probably find patrons going, well, I guess we're going somewhere else. They're full. It's not really a go park in front of somebody else's house type situation and walk back over. You'd have to go around to the back. So we don't see this being, it's going to pour into any residential neighborhoods if the lot is full, which historically it hasn't been. So again, the relief requested would be for a change of use to allow restaurant use of outdoor dining and it would be a special permit to reduce parking for a reduction of 26 off-street parking spaces. And again, I would request or suggest you condition any relief on, um, barriers being installed and approved by the building inspector prior to use of the outdoor dining area. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, that one's that one.
Okay. Any questions at this point by the board?
Jasmine is still open?
No, it's, it can be. Yeah. It's a restaurant with seating. Well, even if they expanded into it, it would be the same parking for the same number of tables. Yeah. So any other questions at this point? Let's ask, take some public testimony. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application, please come forward. Anyone in favor or online? We have nobody left online. Seeing none, anyone in opposition to the application for outdoor dining? Any opposition? Come on ahead.
Hi, Terry Sullivan. Uh, my wife and I own 224 Washington Street, which is a budding subject property. And so, um, I'm also a RE/MAX broker. So I get-
So is that the old, uh, Realty building now as dentists or something?
Uh, no. So it's right at the, right at the Grand Circle. And so there's the subject property. Then next to it used to be the bank. There's a bank there. Then it was Carlson Real Estate that I purchased the building back-
Oh, you have that piece. Okay. In the, in the same-
Right.
Thing. Yeah.
And, and so my, my parking, most of my parking is a budding, the subject property's parking for your discussion. And there's two lines of, of parking spaces. So I think it's like, I think it's seven. There's seven on either side or eight on either side, whatever it is. And so most of the time, there's an overflow at the restaurant and they park in our spots. And it builds up to a crescendo as the season goes on. No, no complaints against the restaurant. There's a great job. They have good food. I'm happy there. Uh, but it's just absorbing our parking spots. So I have two tenants in my building now. I have the RE/MAX tenant and I have a law firm. And so I do get feedback on a regular basis that we can't park in the parking spot because there's other people parking there. Now, whether it's restaurant parking, I can't tell you that. But I'd like to see if we can work out something where there's some effort made on the part of the restaurant to better communicate to their patrons not to park in that first row. Because that actually is, those are my parking spots.
Those are on your property?
Yes.
So they're not in the count that we're dealing with?
It's what?
Well, they're not in the count of spaces that exist-
No.
For the-
So they're using, the overflow, so they're parking in my parking. And it's all about how far do you want to walk to go eat at the restaurant? So as opposed to walking around the corner, they just park in my spots. And there are days I pull in and I can't park there. So, uh, and I wind up driving around the corner myself, which seems, you know, not, not beneficial to me at all.
Your parking is primarily for the employees?
So it's, it's the patrons and the employees that work both in the, uh, law firm and at RE/MAX. And so I, I think there's only, I'd have to count them again, seven or eight spaces right along that line. But there's not a day that goes by, there isn't one or two or five or eight cars or seven cars parked in that area. So I did talk to the proprietor a little while ago down at the restaurant to see, gee, if you could, you know, be a little more cooperative and help, help me out here. And I'm sure there's a, a solution.
Yeah, have them towed. After three, no one will park there again.
It's, it's, yeah, right.
Are this, are your spaces marked as-
They're not.
These are for the exclusive use of RE/MAX and law firm X?
It, it's not. So they're just line parking spots. So there's no practical place to put a sign because I have to plow that during the winter time. So I'd be drawing, I'd be riding over the sign or people would hit the sign. I could make a different colored lines.
Paint the message in the lot, in the space.
I could do that.
And you could tow them. Okay, we'll, we'll take that into account. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? No, we'll close it. Rebuttal?
To address that concern, I'd be willing to suggest a condition that, um, the applicant for this project, uh, pay to have reserved, painted in the, the seven or eight spots that are on the neighbor's property to make sure that, you know, it's clear that I'm pulling in, these are reserved spaces and not just general parking spaces.
Okay, good. We like compromise.
Doesn't always happen, but we'll take it.
Well, I will say, I'd comment on one thing. Now that we're going to be permanently permitting a lot of these outdoor dining, I know we're going to have a lot of them to hear. I felt one of the board's responsibilities is traffic and safety. It's clearly in the ordinance for the outdoor dining. And I know we've kind of in the past have just said, well, what the bill, if the building inspector says it's okay. And I'd like, and I've, I've told some applicants and I'd like to see us be more forceful in one of two ways. Either we should require exactly what's going in there and only permit it based on what we think is right. Or if we still continue to say, all right, we're going to let the building inspector decide if it's safe enough. To be honest, I'm not, we have a new building inspector, which is fine, but in the past projects have been done not to our satisfaction and they're still unsafe today. So I want to figure out a way. And if it's just saying, okay, we're going to let the building commissioner say it's okay when he issues the permit. But I will say publicly that with any pushback or appeal of his decision, we're going to support him. So it's, either way, I mean, is that our approach? Or are we saying we want to detail now upfront what they're going to do for safety? I'm asking you guys on the board.
I'm, I'm thinking they should provide that information upfront for the most part. I mean, it's just, it's a matter of public safety. That's all, you know, like you said, that been friendlies. The curb is very short there. And this isn't just this place. This is for any restaurant, you know, beyond this date. So traffic flow and safety is a real thing. And I think providing the right barriers that the board seems fit and, you know, collaborating with the building commission is something our responsibility.
I mean, I think what was presented to us, the ballot, you know, the concrete dividers, whether they were water filled or concrete would satisfy me to issue this permit.
Right.
But we've had ones where I've actually witnessed cars push the wooden barriers into the place where the people are eating.
Right.
And we, that's our, that, when somebody gets killed, then it's up.
Yeah.
You know, because we didn't, we didn't make it enough requirements, so.
So Joe, I liked, I liked the conversation. I'm actually not in Gloucester, but I've been in other communities. I'm just absolutely shocked when I drive by the lack of safety for those people sitting behind, you know, some wooden fence or nothing. You know, come to a, come to an intersection and you look, my gosh, if I lost my brakes, I'm going to kill ten people.
They're in the news all the time. These things happen.
Yeah, no, of course this happens. Yes.
And there was a time when a lady drove over. That used to be the friendlies takeout window. And the car drove right off it. And luckily, nobody was, got hit. But there were people in line going to get ice creams.
Yeah.
It can happen. It can happen easy. You know how somebody hits the wrong thing and people living older and the reflexes aren't quite as.
Property adjuster. Come on, Joe. I did, I deal with it in my job. Yes.
According to Joe.
So I, I think I would say we'd want it to state that, that those kind of barriers are a part of this project. All right.
I'm just concerned about our expertise in defining what an adequate barrier is. I mean.
Walks like a duck in it, talks like a duck. It's a duck. I mean, we all know a wooden fence is not an adequate to stop a motor vehicle. That's what we're talking about, motor vehicles. What do they do on any road to stop motor vehicles? They put the concrete.
Jersey barriers.
So we'll go with that.
Okay.
They can decorate them any way they want. They can put plants on them. I hope they do.
And murals?
I hope they make them look great, but I think we should say that's going to be a requirement. So if being so, we'll have a motion on this one.
I can do that. Petitioner Loneway Realty LLC seeking special permit one point eight, two point three point four parentheses nine for outside seating and a special permit one point ten four point one point two to allow a lesser number of parking spaces at two twenty-six Washington Street. I think attorney Favaza met the seven standards for the outside seating permit. And I think the lesser number of parking spaces is reasonable. And I think a track record shows that it's adequate there. And I think the two conditions would be conditioned, the this would be conditioned on Jersey barriers being installed to protect the seating area. And that the applicant would pay to have the seven to eight parking spaces owned by the neighbor to be painted for reserved spaces. Move approval for both.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. For the special permit, the guy with outdoor seating. And to allow a lesser number of off-street parking spaces.
Specifically twenty-six, yeah.
Yeah, I definitely support that. I've, I've seen it when those both were going full blast. If you've been around, it actually used to be three businesses. There was a Brooks Drugstore in the middle of the two restaurants. So it's, it's been able to hold a lot of parking. There's a lot of parking down by the water on the right. Number wise, yeah, we're granting a variance, but I think it's adequate. So I would support that too. So we have a motion made and seconded. Roll call vote. And I will state, I'm going to be stamping the plan that shows the Jersey barriers. That's going to be the approved plan. So that way they'll get put in. All ready?
Mr. Nyman?
Yes, for both special permits with the conditions.
Mr. Gilati?
Yes, for all with the condition.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes, with the conditions.
Mr. Prisay?
Also vote in favor. Heard our decisions positive.
Thank you.
Right, our last hearing of the night is another outdoor dining. This is the petition of GX dash PH three LLC seeking a special permit under one point eight and two point three point four subsection nine. Once again, for outdoor seating at one Gloucester Crossing. I remind the board, we heard this before when they weren't sure what was going to go in there, possibly a restaurant. So we did have a, we, there is a decision in the packet that we had written in the past. And my only comment upfront, and I had expressed this to the applicant that we want them to touch on more detail about the safety barriers and we'll make them part of our going. So go ahead, sir. You have the floor.
Thank you. My name is, for the record, Tim Power, civil engineer representing the applicant. Today, I was actually part of the team who prepared the special permit back in twenty nineteen. So they brought me back and to re-up this one. So as mentioned, my address from my company is actually eighteen Glendale Road in Norwood, Masters. So as mentioned by the chair, we had original permit for this. And at the time, if you look back at some of the permits, we actually got two permits for outdoor seating, both for Starbucks and for the same space we're going to talk about tonight. The, after the permits were granted, we completed the construction on the shell building, built out the concrete area as part of the sidewalk for use for the patio area. We just did not have a tenant identified, so they didn't put up the, the perimeter fencing and barriers that were anticipated at that time. Then with no tenant and COVID went on, took some time, the permit expired. So here we are today, fast forward today. We have the exciting tenant who's moved in. I believe it's open Harbor Nine Golf, a golf simulator and with restaurant and bar service as well. They're looking to utilize that patio area as, as we had, very similar to as we had originally presented. So we're, in essence, we're hoping to renew the permit that we had. The application we provided included a layout of the tenant's actual patio. It's just slightly smaller than we anticipated in twenty nineteen. They were only showing occupancy of ten people on that plan. The original permit was thirty-six. Was a little bit wider. Original permit had a six-foot band of sidewalk outside the patio, so patrons could pass by. They're, I think, keeping at least eleven feet in the front and a little bit more on the side. The original permit also, as mentioned by the chair a few times here now, talked about the safety barriers. Although we didn't include that, we had anticipated a similar condition to get in a little more detail what we're expecting at, this is a permanent placement. So the Jersey barriers is probably inappropriate here, but we're proposed to do steel bollards, a concrete set six feet apart in line with the posts for the fence enclosure set into the concrete around, very similar to what Starbucks has just down the end of the plaza. I do have some pictures here. I apologize. My, my computer does not have the right wire to plug in. Happy to pass these around to the board if anyone needs to see them, if they have not been to Starbucks. As an example of what we're looking to do. The last piece I did want to touch on, just in case someone picked up on it in our cover letter for the application. We did have a little typo that talked about drive-through and takeout service that is not intended for this restaurant by any means. That was for the Starbucks application, so I apologize for that. This is just a sit-in restaurant, perhaps with incidental takeout, but, but not a drive-through and not heavy takeout use. I'll leave it there. Happy to touch on any other aspects.
Thank you. Rob, you're, you've seen the Starbucks. You're happy. That's a nice, they did a nice job on that. I have no problem with. Okay, yeah, I mean, either, we're either way, you know, if you're, you're making something obviously better looking and that's great. And the ballots solve the safety issue. So we're, we're very good with that. Any discussion by the board, questions or anything at this point?
I think for you and me, Joe, less is more, right? I mean, we both voted for this thing back in two thousand nineteen and they're only asking for ten spaces this time instead of thirty-six. So it's easy for me.
Easy one, yeah. Okay, any, we'll take public testimony, just in case anyone wishes to speak in favor of the application, either in person or online, please come forward. Seeing none, is there anyone that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward or raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll end public, the public hearing. And we'll go to a motion if there are, unless there's more discussion by the board. I'd like to make a motion that petitioners who is GX PH three LLC, who is seeking a special permit one point eight and two point three point four par nine, closed paren for outside seating at one Gloucester Crossing, building C, unit three thirty-five. Be approved with the condition that specifications for permanent bollards be included going forward. Second. Motion made and seconded. Roll call vote.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Gilati?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Nyman?
Yes, and I'm assuming that a similar write-up will be, you know, compared to the last one, you know, citing the seven factors for one point eight point three. Yes.
Mr. Prisay?
Yes. You heard us, decision's favorable. Did we write the decision the last time or did you folks?
The, someone for the applicant had written it the last time.
Someone for the app.
Yeah.
We can, it's easy enough if, if that's not available, we can amend this one.
We do have the, the original document. We can certainly provide it to you.
That'd be great. If it helps us, I'll get it done quicker.
Yep, absolutely.
Great. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
And you can forward it into the office and then she'll distribute it to us.
Great.
Thanks. Okay, that's it for the hearings tonight.
Yeah, I have a question. Back on the, which hearing were we at? Thirteen Hammond. Can we actually, can we legally amend that? Or is that, are we done with that? Because Joel had suggested that that decision be conditioned upon that second driveway being properly permitted through city council. And we did not condition that.
That's planning board, right?
Planning board, yeah.
To answer that question, the condition would have been extra, the building inspector cannot issue a permit without site plan approval. So even though if it didn't make it into your decision tonight, if we go to apply for a building permit with just the zoning relief and no special permit or no site plan approval from the planning board, it'll get denied.
Yeah, they're just going to have to get that anyway.
Sounds good. Yeah, thank you.
Good check. All right, welcome everyone back from the travels. Good to have a few bodies next to me. The mic. Yeah, I don't know what. Other than that, anybody, anything else? So we do have a full docket on June. I keep saying ninth, it's thirteenth, I think.
Thirteenth, correct.
So we'll probably have like six hearings. So everybody have packets here tonight. Don't forget to take them. Study them intensely. And then June twenty-seventh, we already have a couple of things on that docket. So be a busy June. We've got a fiesta right in between then. We usually lose Peter to hangovers.
Is he walking the pole?
Oh, he will be. Yeah, he will be. So other than that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
Roll call. You know, Michael, if you were here, we could just say all in favor.
I'll show up one of these days.
Mr. Gilati?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Canova?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Prisay?
Yes, we are officially adjourned. Thanks, everybody.